Okay, guys, we're gonna get going. Yeah, I've got a pretend gavel over here. So, um, we'll go on to the agenda and it's just a little bit after six. So, item number one on the agenda is call to order welcome and roll call. And I believe, um, the only trustee that wasn't able to attend is Anne Wake and she's home ill.
Vicky McDonald.
Oh, and Vicky is home, okay. So, um, so we're missing those two, Elizabeth, and everyone else is here. So now we'll stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. And if the student trustees can start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we move to item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to make a suggestion as to a revision? Or, um, should we approve the agenda as it's set? Seeing no one making a suggestion that we revise it, then we'll continue as the agenda has been set. So, item number four is approval of the minutes. And there are two sets of minutes. The first is the regular board meeting from January 10th, 2017. First, are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from January 10th? Moved by trustee Newbold and seconded by trustee Dupree. All of those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come to the regular board meeting minutes from January 24th that are found beginning on page 16. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Um, trustee Kendall?
Sorry, there was one, um, thing on page 21 of the packet, page six of that set of minutes. About almost halfway down the page, Jean Zosel from Garden City Harvest was talking and she said $50,000 per year, rather than 15. I think that was just a mishearing of what she said. I called her today to ask her to be double sure and she said it should be $50,000 per year. Thanks.
And so, does anyone have any objection to making that correction? To change the 1-5-0-0-0 to 5-0-0-0-0? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes as corrected from January 24th? Moved by trustee Newbold and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. All those in favor of approving the corrected regular board meeting minutes from January 24th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to public comment. And this is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. If you have anything you'd like to bring to the attention of the board or the superintendent and, um, anything that falls underneath the authority of the school district, we'd love to hear from you. We ask you to state your name, spell your name if it's an unusual spelling of your first and last name. And if you represent an organization, to identify that organization and try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Thanks. And turn on the microphone.
Thank you. Melanie Charleston, President, Missoula Education Association, Vice President, MEA MFT. At the last January board meeting, I shared with you an opportunity that Superintendent Thane and Dr. Elise Guest and Jennifer Courtney, myself, Jordy Hall, and Jenny Malloy were embarking on that next day or so. We did go to Minneapolis and had a great, two very intense days of conferencing on Network Improvement Communities. That's the NIC, Network Improvement Communities. We were one of six districts in attendance. So, I had shared that this was gonna be a pretty small group, a lot of real focused attention. The other districts in attendance with their locals were Green Bay, Wisconsin, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Madison, Wisconsin. Wisconsin's had a few issues there lately. Spokane, Washington, which we found really intriguing because of the closeness and some similarities with our districts. And then, Washoe County, Reno, where I'm pretty good friends with the local president there. So, that was a really pleasant surprise to see her. During that time, we had an opportunity to delve into this process of looking in a scientific improvement method to change issues that districts may be having. Specifically, retention, recruitment retention, for the most part, of new hires and how to support new hires in the first two to five years of their careers. But, in our discussions, we felt that this could really delve into items beyond that. It's not a plan, it's not a program, it's not a do this and all is well and no one will ever leave your district or their career. But it's really looking and seeking input and feedback from those who are new hires, looking at the problems from lots of different angles and working together to solve. And then the network would come from those other districts and ourselves, sharing our ideas, what we've done in kind of a systematic, data-driven manner, and then reporting out what works, what doesn't work, and how we can try something new and move on. So, the team, we're going to meet again tomorrow afternoon. Right, am I right on that one? Thank you. Tomorrow afternoon, we've been given some other information, a letter of intent if we choose to move forward or not. And we'll need to kind of make a decision by the end of the month. So, we'll report back to you later, once we've kind of gone through that process. It was a great, great two days. I really appreciated the time with administration and with the coaches who joined us. So, I thought it was really a valuable use of our time. I just returned Sunday from DC. Last Thursday, had lovely opportunity to speak with our two senators and advocate for students in Montana on their behalf. So, and I had some different, um, meetings. I had kind of night and day meetings. So, in one particular meeting, I met with a staff member, shared the information, was not able to receive any data back. I asked specifically about numbers of phone calls regarding Betsy DeVos. I asked some very pointed questions and again was not giving a yes or a no sort of answer in regards to the senator's opinion on vouchers, tuition tax credits, education savings accounts, all of those kind of vehicles that would divert public funds into privatization that we are hearing or potential from Betsy DeVos. So, Senator Dane's office was unable to give me solid yeses or nos on those answers. I walked down the hall to Senator Tester's office and was greeted by his education staff, as well as his chief of staff, as well as the senator himself. So, I had a 20-minute conversation with those individuals. All very positive. Senator Tester is firmly against vouchers going for privatization. He's, uh, will speak solidly on that on the Senate floor. I thanked him for his vote against Betsy DeVos on behalf of educators here in Montana. We appreciated that opportunity. Shared with him concerns we have about the nomination of Judge Gorsuch for Supreme Court. NEA is very concerned that Judge Gorsuch has ruled in some cases in which he's taken a stance of anti-IDEA. And we very firmly stated we're against those pieces. Now, the senators have asked for cases that will support that and I've relayed that to NEA, so I'll be passing those on as well, once we receive those. So, um, it was an interesting, interesting time to be in DC. So, let's just keep phone calls and emails going. Senator Tester actually offered that they had received over 8,500 emails in about three or four days on DeVos. Twenty of them said, "Vote for her." The others said no. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? And I can't tell if the microphone's on, so if you can turn it back on?
I think it's on now. Hi, I'll talk about an unusual name. My name is Dalit Guscio. Dalit is D-A-L-I-T, Guscio is G-U-S-C-I-O. I've got two kids in a public school system, in elementary school, Lucian Clark. And I'm actually here to talk about, or to raise my concerns about the fact that I heard nothing from MCPS about the confirmation of our new Secretary of Education, which, uh, I think that quiet silence is more scary than actually knowing what's going on. Is there any, like, direct negative impact on our public schools? If there are, are there any plans? If there are none, if we don't know, anything would be help, will be helpful. It's not only my concerns, it's other parents'. Being in the dark is really scary for our kids and we're ready to help to, um, if there is need of any help. Not only concerned about the funding going somewhere else, but also about content. I don't want to go back, I don't know how many years back where we would have to consider if we want to teach evolution or another theory that's irrelevant. That's just one of many. So, um, just would really want to hear something from you guys about the future of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I explained, public comment on non-agenda items, the board can't discuss them because they haven't been noticed up as a topic that the board will be discussing. If it's something that we believe we could talk about at a later time, we'll have to give notice to everybody before the meeting. So, that's why there's no comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is reports and announcements. And so, I see we have several of our student trustees. We've got Hellgate and Sentinel. And I don't know if we're going to have Ceeley Swan. And I, I'll see if I can get a report from the Big Sky trustees. Uh, next week, I think they were both traveling. Adam and Brianna were traveling for other events. So, I'll let you guys decide. How about Hellgate first?
Alright, so, starting with sports. Boys and girls swimming took first place at state this year. Speech and debate is sending five people to nationals this year in June, held in Alabama. These are including Madeline Millar and Estrella Bandaire, I think, in public forum debate. Natalie Milar and Monroe Ayers in duo speech. And Cadence Wilson in humorous or humorous oral interpretation.
Yes.
Boys basketball beat Big Sky last Tuesday and Sentinel last Saturday in a very close and exciting overtime game. Girls basketball beat Big Sky last Tuesday as well, but unfortunately lost against Sentinel in a very close four-point game. In the next couple of weeks, both boys and girls basketball will be taking on Flathead and Glacier, both in Missoula and Kalispell. Also, senior nights are coming up. February 23rd against Helena High for boys and February 25th against Capitol for girls. These are great times to honor the seniors and all of their hard work. And cheer and debate, or, yeah, cheer and dance seniors will be recognized at these nights as well. Sweet, thank you. And now for some other activities going on at Hellgate. Yesterday, varsity choir took a field trip to Big Sky for a performance. And as well as all Northwestern musicians leave this Thursday, the 16th and 19th, and we'll get back on the 19th, obviously. And we wish them all the best of luck. Next Friday, February 24th, jazz band is having a great concert with a special guest, Alan Vazutti. This concert is a collaboration with U of M and I hope that you all will attend. The Western Regional Poetry Out Loud starts at 6:30 PM this Wednesday in the Hellgate Auditorium. It's free admission and open to the public. Also, in honor of Valentine's Day, PPA sold cupid arrows during lunch. And, um, the Library Journal Turbador sold Valentine cards. And student government sold candy grams during lunch to be sent to your significant other or best friend or yourself during class. Thanks and happy Valentine's Day from us at Hellgate.
You, Dylan.
Good evening. Many of Sentinel's winter sports and activities will be wrapping up their seasons this month with their members participating in the many state competitions underway. The state wrestling competition took place in Billings last Thursday and Friday. Spartan basketball had an exciting week participating in two crosstown matchups. The Missoula High School Special Olympics team attended the 26th Annual Winter Games at Lost Trail Ski Resort at the end of January. Over 25 athletes competed in cross-country skiing, snow shoeing, and unified races. The team brought home an impressive, um, number of first and through third place medals. Swimming also competed in their state competition last Friday and Saturday. Sentinel's speech and debate team recently returned from their state tournament with some very noteworthy accomplishments. Kelly Rosenquist and Jackson Petty took third in public forum debate. Taylor Gregory took second in legislative debate. Christopher Malkinson was awarded first place in legislative debate. Speech and debate competed at national qualifiers in Great Falls this past weekend. Sentinel DECA received the Membership Campaign Status Award for having 25% membership increase. Its chapter keeps breaking its own records and is now twice as large as the next largest DECA chapter in the state of Montana. Sentinel's DECA membership reached an incredible 162 student members this year, with 119 of those members competing this Sunday, this last Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday at the State Career Development Conference in Great Falls, from which we literally just got back about 20 minutes ago. So, that's why I'm a little flustered. Sentinel DECA qualified a total of 45 students for the International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, this April. Nine members qualified in two events, three members qualified in three events, and three members qualified in four events. Sentinel also earned, for the first time, the Montana DECA Spirit Award. And advisor Mark Hartman was recognized as the Montana DECA Advisor of the Year, which is, I think, we should all agree, is well-deserved. The Sentinel High School Wind Ensemble will be performing at the University of Montana Concert Band Festival on Monday, February 27th. The All-Star Honor Choir performed at the University of Montana on Sunday, February 5th. Double A Orchestra performed all day on Monday. The Treble Choir, um, February 6th and Tuesday, February 7th. They performed all day, um, on Monday, February 6th and Tuesday, February 7th. On Monday, February 13th, the Treble Choir participated in the Treble Choir Festival at Big Sky. The students had the opportunity to rehearse all day with Dr. Kirk Amat, Director of Choirs at Montana State University, and then performed with other advanced women's choir from our region in an evening concert. Sentinel's all Northwest museums will be, musicians will be traveling to Bellevue, Washington on Thursday, February 17th. Students from Sentinel High School created an app, Classroom Assistant, and it was chosen as the best in-state winner for Montana in the Verizon Innovative Learning App Challenge. Verizon received more than 1,800 app concept submissions in this highly competitive contest. This is a very impressive award that was won thanks to the efforts of Dan Landy and his computer science students. Starting this fall, Sentinel will be the first school in Montana to implement the Advanced Placement Capstone Diploma Program. The diploma, um, was developed by the College Board, the not-for-profit that houses Advanced Placement. It was implemented in 650 schools worldwide this year. To earn the diploma, a student has to earn a score of three or higher on six AP exams, including AP exams for two courses that will come on board at Sentinel in the next two school years. AP Seminar and AP Research. Sentinel currently offers 18 AP courses, which make up about 12% of the course guide. This year, there are about 575 enrollments in AP courses, which includes students taking more than one AP course. The AP Diploma is a way for counselors to say to college admissions officers, "Here's a gritty kid," Principal Fuller said. Congratulations, Sentinel. This is yet another example of Sentinel leading the way. A select few of Sentinel's student athletes deserve recognition for their signings with many college programs they will be continuing their academic and athletic careers at. Molly McDonald, Montana State, Cross Country Track and Field. Madeline Hamilton, the University of Montana, Cross Country Track and Field. Spencer Shock, Montana Tech Football. Ethan Jones, Montana Tech Football. Ryan Finley, Montana Tech Football. Connor Crawford, Montana State University, Northern Football. Mitch Roberts, the University of Montana Football. Chelsea Bone, Dominican University Volleyball. Brittany Delridge, Eastern Washington University Soccer. Sid Steele, the University of North Florida Soccer. Emily Earl, the University of Montana Western Cheerleading. And Sean Ramsbacker is also going to Montana Tech to play golf. Congratulations to all of them. And I hope the rest of the month treats you all very well, despite more cold winters still ahead. Thank you.
So, what is DECA? What is DECA? Is it just a five-oh name? It's like BPA, but like more advanced.
And while they're seeing if we can get ahold of Ibi, if any of the student trustees have other obligations, as we know, we'd love to have you stay, but I know especially since you just got here. So, feel free to leave whenever you want to. So, thank you. Okay, be back.
Bye, guys. Then there was one.
Hi.
Hi, Ibi, you're on line for the school board meeting. Are you ready to give your report?
Yep.
Great, go for it.
Alright, um, so I'll start off with sports. Got the regular season of basketball over. Our boys and girls teams are now off to tournaments, going in, um, the first seat for girls and the second for boys. The girls finished off a one-season loss in the past week, polishing their perfect, uh, 10-0 record in conference. With two more wins, uh, in Victor and Darby. The boys also came out of the weekend with two more wins, finishing with an 8-2 conference record. The, the boys play first, um, in the district tournament on Friday night against, at 3:00, against the winner of Victor and Darby. The girls will also play right after that, playing the winner of Valley Christian, between the Valley Christian and Victor game. Um, and then, other than sports, uh, we have student government is doing a pep rally to, well, it's kind of sports-related. It sends, to send off the, um, basketball teams to their tournaments. That'll be happening tomorrow. Also, student council held a blood drive back on January 21st. We had two, 23 people donate blood and each donation can save up to three lives. And then we've got the stage, which is now complete and band and drama are making good use of it already. And then we've got, spring break is approaching fast and I know the students here at Slaughter definitely counting down the days. And then we've got, uh, the rifle team went down to Fort Benning, Georgia and competed in the Army Nationals. And that's all.
Thank you, Ibi.
Alright, bye.
Bye-bye.
Well, thank you for the trustees who were able to be here, the student trustees. And now we move on to 6B, which are announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. I would note that next Monday, February 20th, is recognized as President's Day. It's a holiday and all administration buildings and schools will be closed. We have a few sets of trustee visitations that will continue to occur. Thursday, February 23rd, the three middle schools, Washington, Meadow Hill, and CS Porter. And that'll be at 8:30 AM. We have Thursday, March 2nd, visitations to Hawthorne, Jefferson, and Cold Springs. And of course, Jefferson is housing the Franklin, uh, population this school year. Friday, March 10th, the Willard Alternative High School Program, as well as Hellgate High School. So, uh, lots of opportunities for trustees to, uh, visit school buildings and we hope to see you there. In her report, Gabby referenced Alan Vazutti being in town to perform with our high school students. And what you may not know is Alan is a nationally, internationally acclaimed, jazz trumpet player. And he's also an alum of Hellgate High School, class of 1969. So, Alan will be in town performing with a number of groups and you may have seen the posters around town. We're very fortunate to have that opportunity. Yesterday, Melanie Charleston and Dave Rot and Pat McHugh and I went to Helena for the caucus day on the hill. Had an opportunity to interact with a number of our local legislators and state officials. And I will give you a brief legislative update in just a moment. There's a second opportunity, Monday, March 13th, which will be a day of advocacy at the Capitol in Helena. As was referenced in Ibi's report, uh, it won't be long and spring break will be upon us. And that means we'll have parent-teacher conferences coming up in mid-March. So, we're less than one month away from parent-teacher conferences. So, lots happening in the schools right now. Just a very brief update with regard to the legislature. Things seem to be moving extremely slowly this session. And then today, for some reason, a number of bills broke out of their holding pens. They had been tabled, uh, we had seen no action and all of a sudden, there was a flurry of action today. And, uh, I don't really know what, uh, that's accounted for. It was, it was odd. So, I'm assuming some deals are being made. At any rate, a brief update. House Bill 385 is titled the Safe Schools Act. And actually, it would allow, uh, concealed weapons to be carried by staff members on campus. I would say that, uh, the Gun-Free School Zones Act of 1990, which passed Congress and was signed into law by President Bush, still applies, uh, still aligns with our district policy. And I feel very strongly that we should advocate that this bill be killed. I went to hearing at the Judiciary Committee today. I don't know the outcome, but I assume that it wasn't voted upon because I just a few minutes ago received an email saying we needed to make those contacts again. So, we'll continue to follow that. House Bill 178 would fund 19-year-olds who continue to work to seek their high school diploma. And that's been tabled. House Bill 192 would raise the dropout age from 16 to 18, and that's also been tabled. And my understanding is both of those were tabled because they do, uh, have a fiscal note attached to them. There would be a requirement to pay A and B for those students. House Bill 274 would fund, uh, continuing education for students with disabilities through age 22, which is what happens in most states. That has not seen action yet. So, we'll see where that one goes. House Bill 292 would, uh, change the funding formula so that sixth graders, just like seventh and eighth graders, would be funded at the high school rate, since they participate in middle school programs. And that bill has been tabled. House Bill 423, um, is really an interesting bill. It would provide for the creation of, uh, special needs savings accounts. What it would do essentially is take money that's allocated to districts for special education services and create savings accounts that parents could access to acquire services outside of the public schools. So, essentially, uh, it's a voucher program. It has raised opposition from virtually all the professional organizations in the state, but apparently still has some legs. Senate Bill 139 is the bill that's being carried that would be for high school expansion, K-8 districts to expand to K-12 districts. It's very much alive. One of the significant changes from the last session's bill is that there is not a provision for division of assets. You'll recall, two years ago, that there was a process where we would, uh, be subject to splitting any assets that we had with any new district that's formed. The conversation that we had yesterday, uh, sounds like that's still got a fair amount of momentum. And we'll continue to follow it. I believe I referenced previously, there were about 90 bills that were originally sent for bill draft. Many of those have effectively been squelched. And the conventional wisdom is, uh, if it doesn't appear like it's got any prospect of succeeding, and that's particularly if it has a fiscal note attached to it, then, uh, they've been asked not to even bring those bills forward. There's another bill that I failed to mention and I don't remember the number. Two years ago, a million dollars was added to the high school CTE funds, but it was for the two years of that biennium only. So, that money would go away if it's not renewed. And there is legislation to continue funding that million dollars, plus a request for an additional $1 million. The biggest news, though, is House Bill 191, which is the bill that has the inflationary factor applied to many of the budgeted funds, has passed through both houses. It, uh, went back to the House with amendments from the Senate and is now on the governor's desk. It would include only a 0.5%, uh, increase in the first year of the biennium. We had been calculating a 1.37% increase based on the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index. What they did, though, was moved, uh, the majority of that increase to the second year of the biennium. So, we would be poised for a 1.87% increase in fiscal year 19. So, the effect over two years is we would still get a total of 2.37%, but they would essentially carve a little more than $6 million off of the first year appropriation. So, that has some impact on our preliminary budget figures. It still, however, includes the Data for Achievement Payment and the Natural Resource Development Payment, although we understand that that would need to be funded through House Bill 2 in order for us to actually access those revenues. So, uh, you'll notice on our agenda tonight, we don't have Pat slated to do a budget update because there are a lot of moving parts. But we'll be back in two weeks at the next board meeting with a budget update based on the best information we have available at that time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now we move on to 6C, which are...
I just have a question about your report. I was wondering if you could elaborate just a little bit more on the $1 million that are for the CTE credits? Is that just spread throughout the whole schools or is that just for...
Spread across the state.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then it's a time for announcements from trustees. Are there any announcements from trustees? Trustee Smith?
Thanks. I just wanted to, um, touch on, um, Mr. Thane mentioned the upcoming school visitations. We started those last week and we visited, uh, Mount Jumbo, which is where the Lowell population is being housed, and Rattlesnake in Paxton. And, uh, after going through those visits, I wanted to, uh, give a few shout-outs. And, uh, after going through those visits, I wanted to, uh, give a few shout-outs, couple of thank yous. Number one, I wanted to thank the voters for passing the bond that has allowed us to do, uh, the changes and make these facilities a lot better. We saw some great progress at both Rattlesnake and Paxton, uh, and a little bit of Mount Jumbo just while they're housing. I would also like to give thanks, uh, to the staff and the students of especially, uh, the schools that are dislocated, being Lowell and Franklin, but also to Rattlesnake students and staff and Paxton. Everybody has, uh, lived through and is living through the changes. It's, uh, not easy, but we really appreciate, uh, the sacrifices that they're all making. And also just a third shout-out to the construction teams that are working on those projects. Um, I was, uh, stubbornly impressed and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing more progress and, and great projects as they move along. Thank you.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. So, um, I, uh, wanted to just say a couple of quick things, um, about, um, about response in our community, our MCPS community since the election and, um, since the inauguration. Um, there has been a great deal of, um, change that's been discussed, proposed, begun, um, and a lot of people are uncertain. We've certainly seen, um, in Helena and in Missoula on numerous occasions, lots of people expressing, um, concern and distress about changes that are potential and, uh, and some in motion. And so it started me doing a little bit of digging and a little bit of research into what statutes say about our schools' responsibilities, um, in these areas and also what our policies are in these areas. And I found some information that was very heartening to me and really reinforces, I think, our values as a community and gives us a very strong place to stand, um, and to be, um, be the kind of community that, that we strive to be as MCPS. So, um, there is, um, a federal case, a U.S. Supreme Court case in 1982 that, um, established that students who are undocumented, um, non-citizens, in fact, have the same, um, requirement to attend school as any other children and school districts around the country, um, are required to serve these children and may not deny them admission, may not pursue practices that might expose them as undocumented. And I found that to be a very, um, interesting and heartening, um, reality that I had not been aware of before that. So, I think it's something that our community can really benefit from knowing that, um, that is in fact our statutory responsibility. And then in digging into our policies, um, the very first policy in our section about instruction articulates a set of goals for children in our district at all ages and across all programs. Um, the very first piece of which is that our instructional programs, methods, and materials shall be based upon respect of others and not imply, teach, or encourage any beliefs or practices reflecting bias or discrimination toward other individuals or groups based on race, ethnicity, religion, sex, creed, age, national origin, and will not deny others' basic human rights. And there's a list then of skills and attitudes that we want to instill in all the children who are served by our district. And those include, um, to respect themselves and the rights and property of others, to solve problems cooperatively and individually, to be committed to active citizenship and community service, appreciate world events, history, and cultural diversity. I just wanted to share those because I think they really reflect the best of what our aspirations are for students in the district and they articulate a stance that is, um, that is proactive, that seeks to inspire respectful communication, um, to, to advocate for free speech as a cornerstone of our citizenship and yet to do so in a way that is based on respectful relationship.
Thank you. Any other, um, comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to new business, which is the Smart Schools 2020 update. And so Mark, are you going to introduce Burley?
Actually, Burley can.
Introduce himself. Burley, it's your show.
I'll be somewhat brief as we have pretty much ongoing projects going on with, with construction at Lowell and Franklin. Um, Hellgate is, uh, approaching the design development phase, the DD phase, so we are, uh, um, moving along very well there. Cold Springs and Russell are in, um, making great strides with, with their design phases as well. And then Willard, we have architect, uh, shortlist interviews this Thursday, so we will bring that to the next board, uh, meeting for approval, um, to start Willard Design. Um, we also have set out, put out our first, um, bids for roofs and roofs, whatever, how he wants that one. Um, and, uh, we, we, uh, we put Sentinel out and we, we got numbers back and again, that'll be on the next board agenda as well, but, uh, we are definitely getting out in the right time of year. We saw some good numbers come in, but, uh, um, uh, we're following up with, uh, four or five more roofs coming in. So, um, hopefully we're gonna get, uh, some great numbers before everybody else decides to hit the market. So, and that's kudos to, um, our designer, our design teams in Hultang as well. So, it's good to have good partners, uh, in the district to make sure we're saving as much money as we possibly can.
Thank you. Any questions for Burley?
Question, I'm sorry. Um, I just was wondering, um, if you could keep up either the PR or just like letting students know what's going on because I've seen blueprints or just, um, rough drafts in our library of what might happen and that has been helpful to me, but I think not a lot of students know what's really going on and so they're, they just see architects walking around and they're like, "Oh, that's cool, but we don't know why they're walking around." And I so, I would appreciate if you articulated better to the student body of what is happening with that.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've actually talked to, uh, Mr. Miller about that exact thing. So, you guys should be seeing some communication come down here soon.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, any, although it's information only, any public comment? Seeing none, then thank you so much for that update and we'll move on. Is there some? Okay, and so now we're on to A2, which is track improvement plan at Stegner Field. And it looks like Pat's gonna give us an update on the track behind Sentinel High School.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, Stegner Field, for those of you who don't know, is right behind us here, south of the business building on the Sentinel campus. Um, the, uh, the, um, track on that, uh, field is in, in disrepair and, um, so this, this item is really, uh, a heads-up to the board that, that in, uh, the next board meeting, I'll, I'll have a more definitive funding plan to help, uh, proposal and possibly options one, two, and three for, uh, supporting the renovation and, and the, uh, restructure of that track, um, to make it usable. It's, it's used by Sentinel and Hellgate for practice and it's used, uh, by our middle schools for meets and a variety of community track clubs and community members. Um, and so I, I think that, uh, Burley and, and his folks have done a good job of trying to keep it going for a number of years and it, it's finally at the point of, of its useful life. So, um, as much as anything, it's, it's this, this agenda item is, is to, uh, provide this information and, and let you know that we'll be coming back with some, some more detail about how to fund the, the improvements. We are looking at this as an elementary high school funding fix.
Any questions for Pat? Then we'll, as he indicated, we'll see it again as an action item, probably at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Any questions? Any public comment? Seeing none? Well, thanks for that update and we'll look forward to getting the more detailed report next time. And it looks like we're improving lots of things in lots of places. So, three is tennis court improvement plan at Fort Missoula Park. And so, do you want to update us on that one?
You bet, thank you. So, similar to the Stegner Field improvements, um, this is not an action item, it's informational and, uh, letting you know that there's, uh, been some interest by the Parks and Rec Department for, uh, making some improvements to the tennis courts at the fort. Um, and the, those tennis courts are rented by Big Sky High School for tennis court practice and by, uh, some of their classes. Um, this is similar to the Playfair tennis courts where Sentinel and Hellgate rent those courts for practice and meets. Um, so with the, uh, with the proposed renovation of those courts by the Parks and Rec, uh, we were approached about a plan or about the possibility of, of assisting with the funding of those improvements in exchange for, uh, years of free, free use. And, uh, this is something that we did back in 2000 with the, um, both courts when they were resurfaced, um, and we used, uh, intercap loan proceeds and bond proceeds then. Um, here we're, this is early, uh, we're not exactly, uh, fully sure what, uh, what the Parks Department has in mind, but we've taken a stab at, at how we might assist with the funding and, and that's something we'll talk about in a couple of weeks. Just to give an idea, we've, I have looked at, uh, the possibility of, uh, intercap loan. Um, and this is a loan that we can get as a public agency, a school district, from the State Board of Investments. Um, and, and we'd probably incorporate a loan for both this project and the Stegner improvement projects, but the, the rate's a variable rate of interest and it's, it's usually very favorable, so that's what we'll talk about next time.
Any questions for Pat? Any public comment? Seeing none? Well, thanks for that update and we'll continue to hear about it, it sounds like. So, we move on to the personnel report under B1, which is found on page 33. Davis, are there anything to note about the report?
It's a typical report, however, I would make a modification. On the page 37, which is the Elementary Classified Staff Personnel Report, um, we have an employee DL listed under termination of probationary employee, um, and we need to change that to the classified resignation portion.
Okay. Any objection from the trustees to make that correction since there's been an update in the status? Okay, seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the amended personnel report? Anyone want to make, oh, trustee Brexad, seconded by trustee Newbold. And we normally don't discuss individuals on the personnel report, but is there any general board, um, comment? Seeing none? And as I indicated, we don't talk about individuals on the report, but is there any general public comment? Seeing none? Then all those in favor of approving the personnel report as amended, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees present. Thank you, Dave. And now we move on to approve one individual's early admission to kindergarten. Um, this is something we see sporadically, but Dave, if you want to give us an update?
You bet. Typically, we see this in the fall, uh, but we've had as a student who recently enrolled in MCPS who had, uh, been in kindergarten outside of our district. And so pursuant to the, our policies, we take those students into our district from where they were previously enrolled in the kindergarten. Um, and for A and B purposes, we need to have board approval to waive the age requirement.
Any questions for Dave? Trustee Smith?
And just to clarify, this is a full six days?
Correct.
Private, private. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, is there a motion to, um, approve the age waiver for the student identified in our agenda as MM? Moved by trustee Smith, it's seconded by trustee Decker. Any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the age waiver for the student identified in our agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. Then we move on to approving wage increases for para-educator, er, para-educator substitutes. And it looks like it's elementary and secondary. Dave, do you want to give us, um, a quick summary of why you're making this recommendation? And it's to raise the hourly rate from 1075 to 1143.
Absolutely. Last fall, we, uh, raised the hourly rate for our certified substitutes, for teacher substitutes from 1075 to 1143, but we remain, we retained our classified para-educator substitute rate at the 1075. And what we're doing now is requesting to equalize those two. Um, it'll make it easier for us to fill the substitute positions and we'll have, uh, all of the substitutes that go through our, um, computer system will then be applying for jobs at the exact same hourly rate.
Any questions? Trustee Newbold?
Was there any reason we didn't do it in the fall and we're doing it now?
I'll address that one. Uh, we were trying to be conservative given the budgetary approach. In the past, we have had equalized salary amounts and in fact, many of our para-ed subs are certified teachers and they sub in both categories. Uh, we waited until, uh, the business office completed the, uh, encumbering process for all our salaries to see if we had latitude to institute this change. So, uh, the encumbering process is complete and we felt comfortable at this point in time recommending that increase, which obviously will have some budgetary impact.
Any other questions for either Superintendent Thane or... Seeing none? Then is there a motion to approve the increase in the hourly rate of pay for the sub-para-professionals from 1075 to 1143 effective February 6th, 2017? Moved by trustee Brexad, seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any more discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the increase, as I've just described, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. And then, um, we're taking on number four, which is to approve cooperative sponsorship of activities renewal agreements. We've seen these in the past and it looks like Big Sky wants, um, board approval so that they can partner with Flore- Florence Carlton High School for cross-country and with Loyola Sacred Heart High School for swimming. So, Karen, if you want to provide a little bit more information?
Uh, just to say that this is essentially a renewal. We're going for another three years and, uh, Big Sky is in favor and the boards of Florence Carlton and, um, Loyola will be making the same decisions.
Any questions for Karen? Trustee Decker?
Um, just sort of in terms of practicality, what, what does it mean for Florence and Big Sky to partner for cross-country?
It really means that Florence doesn't have the capacity to have a cross-country team and so, uh, Big Sky is the closest and so they come and they practice and they compete with Big Sky. Um, and the same is true for swimming with Loyola.
And so Florence, like, transports them to Missoula and, and...
Typically, that's the responsibility of the family, not the school district.
Okay. Cool, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Um, then there, is there a motion to approve these MHA cooperative sponsorship of activity renewal agreements with Florence Carlton for cross-country and Loyola for swimming? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Dupree. Any board discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none? Then all those in favor of approving the cooperative sponsorship of activities renewal agreement, please indicate by raising your hand. That's all trustees present. Then we get on to number five, which is to approve the first reading of Board Policy 7332, which has to do with advertising in schools and revenue enhancement. And so, Pat, there's, um, a kind of a marked-up document on port 43. If you want to walk us through, um, why this is being forwarded to, and then there's a clean copy, I think, right after that. So, if you could give us an update on this?
You bet, thank you. So, um, this is the same policy we looked at last, uh, board meeting with a couple of changes and, um, we've continued to include the marked-up and then the, the clean version and we'll probably proceed with the clean version, just, um, given all of the marks that really go back, uh, a number of years. So, this, this, these, uh, uh, marks aren't, aren't related to our discussion from last time. So, on page 44, um, it, it, you, you don't see the changes we made, um, from the last board meeting, but the first one is, uh, down the middle of the, the page, um, the, uh, paragraph that begins with approval of the superintendent. Um, in the, at the end of that sentence, when it references the, um, the newspapers, publications, activity schedules, and through signage, it concluded with the phrase, "Meeting the city of Missoula sign ordinances." So, we, we pulled that, that out, or Megan did on our behalf. And then the sixth bullet point on page 44, uh, the bottom third of the page, um, we, uh, Megan, uh, revised that to make that consistent with, uh, our discrimination policy. So, those were the two changes from the, the first look at it, um, just as information only last time.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Kendall?
Um, just a couple of quick things. Uh, it, can you say again, is this going out for public comment now? After tonight? Or is this the end of it?
This is the first reading, so it's...
This is the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll see this again in a couple of...
A month, probably.
Okay.
I think the timing is, is a month.
Okay. And then I, I just have to ask about the, the next section that has all the bullet points. Uh... points. Is, is this something, Mark, that you feel comfortable with? I mean, we do, you know, we have had before this board a question, you know, that related to whatever you want to say, obscenity, vulgarity, something like that. Is this, do you have guidelines? Is, is that, how do you decide this kind of thing, if it, if it is to come before you?
I think that's an excellent question, and essentially, this is to serve as a guide. I think what we would want to say is that anything that we would find that might be objectionable in the eyes of any of our student body or promotes anything like alcohol, tobacco, et cetera, that are not substances that are permissible used by students, that we would exclude. You know, it kind of comes back to the, I would make an analogy to movie ratings. You want it to be something that's not going to cause any person who might attend an event or be in our facilities any level of discomfort. So there's a danger, I think, in including a list because you give an impression that it's an exhaustive list, but the reality is there will have to be some judgment that comes into play. Pat has worked with a committee to identify this process and to establish some parameters, and this, I think, is a good start. I think it's important to reinforce our discrimination policy and the fact that, you know, we do have some prohibitions with regard to certain substances on campus, and we would certainly not recognize those through advertising.
Any other questions, trustee?
In the, what is now the final paragraph that begins, "Students shall not be required to complete any survey." I think that students, especially younger students, if they're requested to complete a survey, they just assume they're required. And I wonder, would we be wrong if we changed that word from required to requested? So we, we don't even, we don't even put it in front of them. I mean, I think by the time they're in high school, they know what to say when they're asked to, you know, they learn civil disobedience. But I think when they're younger, they, they would think they're required if they were requested. So I wonder if we couldn't change that word to requested?
Quite honestly, I don't know why that would influence our ability to sell advertising, so it does seem like it's a little bit disconnected from the policy statement itself. So I think that's a reasonable request that we look at that language. Do you have any issue with that?
No, I think that's fine. I think probably the provision was put in place with the idea of determining decision-making based upon marketing, I'm gathering, so I like the change.
In the first paragraph, the piece about students are not being required to listen to, read or be subjected to commercial advertising, in an era where students are doing lots and lots of research online, that seems really difficult to actually enforce. And I don't know what kind of guidance teachers are going to be getting regarding where students go or are sent, because they'll see advertisements when they're browsing.
I wonder if that's different if it's related to the educational work that's being done in the schools versus the commercial activities that we're contemplating. So the, what this policy would contemplate is a, a, a commercial relationship with a vendor or a company to provide marketing as, as opposed to maybe what they'd see in a classroom or look at in advertising, I guess is how I distinguish it. Mark, do you have any?
You know, I, the only comment I would make is if you read that following sentence, then it does specifically say that students would not be subjected to commercial advertising in the classroom. And so I think what's important is that the committee that Pat's working with would contemplate only some district-approved locations for those ads to appear, whether it be as part of the scoreboard or certain locations in gyms or the stadium, so that it's not directly related to student educational activities, but more intended for the general audience at events or, or such. So I do think there's that distinction between the classroom and those activity venues.
And when, when this was discussed years ago, that was, much of the discussion did center on hallways, classrooms, foyers, that type of thing.
Any other questions? Yes?
This is pretty important, so pay attention. On the clean copy, in the top right, it says page one of three, but there's only two pages.
Got it. Are you missing a page?
That's a great catch. Any other questions before we have a motion to approve the first reading of the statute as it has been modified? Seeing no more questions, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the modified board policy 7332? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Newbold. Any board discussion? I just want to say thank you to Dylan, who had to leave early, for catching the one change that was made. That was a really helpful change for him to have walked through that process with the Sentinel Decker Group. And so thanks to Dylan. And so with that, is there any public comment? Or any other board comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of approving the first reading of board policy 7332 as modified, or amended, I guess I should say, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. And then we move on to C1, and it's the Montana School Boards Association Membership Survey. And so I'll explain and then turn it over to Mark. But what we have decided is that there's a board policy, Montana School Board Association is an organization that our district belongs to, and they have asked us through Ann Wake, who is the vice president of that organization and also one of our trustees, to provide them with some feedback from different activities that they have provided to us. And so there's one which is quite detailed, which has been X-ed out because trustee, or superintendent Thane and I decided that we don't often use their services in those areas more because we're much big, a pretty big board. But there is MTSBA board governance, with governance, which starts on page, what you have in front of you, five and six. So if everyone could just fill it out and turn it in to me, then I'll turn it over to Mark, and I don't know if we'll give it to Ann, but anyway, we'll get the information back as in a synthesis form to let MTSBA know what our board has, because they really appreciate it, getting some feedback from our board. So okay with everyone? Anything, Dan?
I do. The deadline for submission of this survey is actually tomorrow, so it would be very helpful if you could mark them and leave them this evening. And I would reference that the pages you have in front of you are pages five and six of the survey, and as Chair Holland indicated, there's a Likert scale asking us to evaluate a number of programs and workshops that have been offered by MTSBA. Some of us within the district have participated in a number of those programs. So Pat McHugh and Dave Rot and I have all completed that and will synthesize that information as part of our response to the survey. However, those five items contained on page five and six really relate to the board and the district, and so we'd like you to make your mark on the Likert scale. We'll compile them, determine the average, and use that for our submission. Thank you.
Thanks. And so that is an action item in the sense that you take action and leave the action items with Mark. And then we move on to C2, which is to approve superintendent Thane's contract and terms. And as we discussed at some length at the last board meeting, instead of reprinting a contract that has been in existence for a long time, we decided to highlight the changes to the contract. And so I just want to check with our legal counsel, Ms. Caliva, if we are writing a new contract for two years, is that the, because there were two options, but?
Yeah, we're just changing the term essentially, the compensation. The rest of the structure of the contract, okay?
Okay. And so what we're doing now is it's a two-year contract, and the compensation would be, as indicated in the agenda, which is 15850, which is an approximately 2.25 increase for 2017-2018, and then 16250, which is approximately 2.5 increase for 2018-2019, which pretty much mirrors what staff has, the increases in staff. And then we are restoring the district TSA contributions, which were taken out of the contract during the interim period, so we're just putting back in what had been in the superintendent's contract from prior years. So it's $1,500 a month for 2017-2018 and 1750 per month for 2018-2019, and then it's changing one term that the superintendent may elect cash compensation in lieu of the TSA contribution. Any questions for Bea or me about those terms? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the superintendent's contract and the terms, and in particular, the terms which have been identified as terms that are different than what the contract has been in the past? So is it moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Newbold? Any board comment? Well, I think it's a good idea. So I'll make a board comment. I think it's, it's reasonable. I think superintendent Thane's been doing a really good job. I think this is commensurate with what, showing that we support our staff, we want to support our superintendent as well. And so we appreciate the fact that you worked with Bea to come up with terms that are very acceptable, and so thank you to legal counsel and to you for working out the terms. And so with that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of changing or take, adopting a contract with the language that has existed with the past contract with these changes as identified in our agenda. Is there, does that make it clear to everyone what we're doing? Okay, so all in favor of doing that, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you. And now we come to item number eight, and thank you for sticking around for another few years.
Thank you.
And now we take public comment again on non-agenda items. And seeing none, then there is a, a request from the administration for a student expulsion. I've determined that the student's right to privacy outweighs the public's right to know, so we will go into executive session, and we'll take a short break while we allow everyone else to leave the room, because we only can have the board and our attorney and our superintendent at that time. Pardon? I'll take the minutes. Yeah, so.